All right, so it is 6:01. Can we have a roll call vote to begin this meeting? Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt here.
Marissa?
Marissa Carrer here, sorry about that.
Lori?
Lori Garcia here.
Shannon? Shannon? Did you freeze? All right, Maren? I'll come back to Shannon. Thank you froze for a minute. Maren?
Aaron Goldstein here.
Cindy Kuzinski here. And Shannon?
Shannon here.
Awesome, okay. Welcome to the October 6th School Committee Meeting. And I am letting everyone know that we will be going into executive session. We will adjourn after executive session, but we will not be returning to regular session. And we will be doing some conducting of bargaining with the teachers' union. So, Dr. Leclerc, do you have? I... Do you have an announcement you would like to make?
I do have a few announcements.
Okay.
Thank you. Please join me in welcoming Cindy Mojica officially to the school district. She will be the new diversity and family engagement coordinator at the high school. Cindy is a longtime volunteer at the center. And she has been a member of the Equity Committee since its inception three years ago. And I'm sure we'll be hearing from her on the committee. But I just wanted to officially welcome Cindy to her new role. Also, a few more updates. Currently, there is a kindergarten survey out to families of just the kindergarteners. And I'll be doing a presentation on the kindergarten program for Remote Plus tonight. Also, later on this week, I'll be sending out a new... A survey for the naming of the new school. Because we're also working on a new school. And finally, next week, I'll be doing a remote learning survey to kind of get feedback from families after the first month. So, just wanted to share all of that with all of you. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are going to... And our next meeting... Hold on, is... I just didn't write that down. Our next meeting is going to be the 20th? Is that correct? Yes? Okay.
No, I've been told... Cindy?
Yes.
Point of clarification. Sue Colby and I were looking at the calendar the other day. In order to get back on the correct cycle of the second and fourth Tuesdays, if we're going to go back to that, we should go to the 27th.
Okay. That's fine with me. Now that it was...
It will put us back on the regular schedule.
Yeah.
That was better. It's got off for a year.
So, we're going to go three weeks without a meeting with all of what's going on right now? That seems concerning to me.
Oh, that's an interesting... You mean with the numbers rising and things like that?
All of what's going on. And the length of our meetings from the get-go. I've said that if we're going to have a four-hour meeting, let's have... Let's not.
Yeah.
I'd like to get back on a schedule, though. Because I had other commitments the first Tuesday. And we always were the second and fourth, so...
Yep.
So, I would recommend that we go to the second and the fourth, starting in October, which would be meeting next week and then meeting two weeks later then. What I'd recommend.
Would that be okay with everybody? To start the getting back on our normal schedule? We'll take a vote in a minute. To get on our normal schedule after the 20th? Somebody... Is that okay? I don't think we need a vote.
So, next week... Just... I just wanted to clarify what Maren said, I believe. Next week is the 13th and then the 27th. So, I think... Is that what you're voting on?
What I was...
That would put you back on the regular schedule.
If we were on the regular schedule in October, our scheduled meeting would be the 13th and the 27th.
Correct. Yep.
That's what I'm recommending.
Yep.
So, we meet next week and then we... Two weeks after that. So, our schedule... Our regular second and fourth schedule starts in the month of October. We're just also meeting the first week of October as well.
That's fine with me. Is that okay with everybody? Could I please hear from you verbally that that's okay?
I support that.
That's fine with me.
Okay. Shannon?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And that's fine with me. All right. So, we're going to switch this up. Our next meeting is going to be October 13th. And then it will be the 27th. And that puts us on the 27th. We will be back on our normal schedule of every second and third. Second and fourth? Yeah. All right, that sounds good. Okay. Let us open this up to public speak. And we are allowing three minutes per person. I will be scrolling through and taking names of people who would like to talk. And I don't see anybody... Oh, Everett. Okay. Go ahead. Everett?
I'm sorry, I'm on my son's computer.
I know, that's okay. I'm just shouting the name that I see there.
That's okay. My name's Amanda Judd. I live on Button Road. I would like to request possibly a first grade could also be added to the category of special populations being brought back. I have a first grader. And I think if they go this whole year with being remote and they don't go back to school until next year as second graders, they will only have ever had six months of in-school learning ever. And I know some other school districts are considering this as well. And also, as a first grader, first graders can't really read well, at least. So, to have a full remote day also requires the caregivers to read all the assignments all day long going forward. So, just maybe just consider it, adding first grade to the special population. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Because I'm not seeing any hands up yet. I'll scroll through and... Oh, there we go. Ben? Ben, are you lowering your hand?
I'm here, thank you. Just a quick one. It seems like statewide pressure is continuing on in the name of moving us toward a hybrid and/or in-person scenarios. And I just want to again encourage the district to please plan ahead and to put people together, admin, teachers, parents, get a lot of family input around what hybrid will mean as we get closer to it. I just, as I look around the state and I'm sort of keeping an eye on different districts, it seems like no one has really found a way to do it cleanly. And I'm just worried that we're going to kind of dash the very fragile house of cards we built so far. So, that's all. Just thinking about keep planning. It seems like we're moving that way. So, I just hope that we're thinking carefully about what we're going to do. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Welcome, Mayor. Anybody else? Okay. If nobody raised their hand, it's going to be going... Going gone. All right, we will close public speak and we will go on to subcommittee reports. And please bear with us. We are going to have to scroll through. Hopefully, we'll remember our order and just do this quickly. We have to because it's a Zoom. We can't put them all together. So, Shannon is going to read through. We will second quickly and we will roll call vote as quickly as we can. But you have to listen to 38 of them. All right, Shannon, hit it.
Okay. Just so you guys know, I am running into internet issues. So, if I get...
Okay, you are frozen. Do you want Marissa?
Pick it up, or can you?
Do you want Marissa or Lori to do that?
Either one, yeah, that's totally fine.
Why don't they run through them? Because you are breaking up and that might be... That might be more time-consuming. So, Lori, do you want to do it or Marissa?
I don't have it open. I don't have my...
Do you have it open there, Marissa?
I'm getting it right now. Somehow, I always end up losing things once I open my Zoom.
And if we remember, it would go a lot quicker if we just, for the roll call, say the name and we say yes. And now it's not. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm on a phone for the other report and I... Yep. Don't have that up.
All right. So, first reading to add MASC JLC.
Second, somebody?
Second.
Okay. Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Mayor Lushpie.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy? Aye.
First reading to delete EPSD JLC 1. I second that.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Mayor, aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
And Cindy, aye.
First reading to delete EPSD JLC Wellness.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to add MASC ADF.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to delete EPSD JED.
Lori, did you second? I didn't hear you.
Yes, I seconded it.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to add MASC JH.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to delete EPSD GCA.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to add MASC GCA.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to delete EPSD GCAE 1, professional staff positions.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon? Shannon, I think she froze. Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye. Shannon, you un-froze? We can do it without her.
Yeah, we don't need her.
First reading to delete EPSD JFE.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to add MASC JIE.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to delete EPSD JLC C.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to add MASC JLC C.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
And Cindy, aye.
First reading to delete EPSD JHC C.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
And Cindy, aye.
First reading to update current EPSD JRA student records with MASC changes as submitted.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to delete EPSD JRAR.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to add MASC KDB.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to delete EPSD KBA.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to add MASC KBA.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to add MASC GBJ.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to delete EPSD, I believe that's GBL, personnel records.
Yep.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to add MASC IHBG.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to add MASC IHBGR.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon? Still frozen. Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to delete EPSD IGBHA.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon? Still frozen. Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to delete EPSD IGBHR.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to add MASC JJ.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to add MASC KI.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa? Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to delete EPSD KK.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to delete MASEEA.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to delete EPSEEA.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to add MASEEA.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maren?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to add MASEEA.
Second.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.[1243.98]
Lori.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Shannon.
Aye.
Maren.
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to delete EPSD EEA C.
Second. Jonathan.
Aye.
Marissa.
Aye.
Lori.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Shannon.
Aye.
Maren.
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to add MASC JICC.
Yeah. Jonathan.
Aye.
Marissa.
Aye.
Lori.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Shannon.
Aye.
Maren.
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to add MASC EEA G.
Second, Jonathan.
Aye.
Marissa.
Aye.
Lori.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Shannon.
Aye.
M- Maren.
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
First reading to delete EPSD EC.
Second, Jonathan.
Aye.
Marissa.
Aye.
Lori.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Shannon.
Aye.
Maren.
Aye.
And Cindy, aye.
Last one, first reading to update current EPSD EC Buildings and Grounds Management with MASC changes as submitted.
Second, Jonathan.
Aye.
Marissa.
Aye.
Uh, Lori.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Shannon.
Aye.
Maren.
Aye.
Cindy, aye. Whew. Sorry, everybody, but those have to be done. They're really important to delete and then add. So, thank you. Do we have other subcommittee reports? I know Jonathan has one and Maren has one. Lori, too? Okay, hold on. Uh, let's start with Jonathan, if that's okay?
Okay. Um, well, Lori, Lori seems.
No, I just, before moving on, I just want to recognize Shannon Dunham once again for that long list because she worked so diligently to update our policy manual. Nobody else would have that perseverance to do such a task. I agree. Again, it's ironic she couldn't announce them all. Yep. All right.
So, to everybody out there who kind of zoned that out and has a great time to come back in, uh, because I have, um, for those of you who don't know, I serve as the committee's, uh, representative on the East Hampton Media Board of Directors, and they've got a few events that they wanted me to share to families this month. Um, first, they're going to be doing a Halloween video festival, uh, that will be made, uh, entirely of videos, um, produced by, uh, residents in the communities that East Hampton Media serves.
Yeah.
Um, they're taking submissions until, uh, Sunday, October 25th. Uh, the festival itself will take place on the 30th, uh, via Zoom on their TV channel, um, 191, Facebook and YouTube. Um, so that might be a fun opportunity for some of our students and
That's really cute.
families to participate in. Um, those who feel like they'd like a little bit of a primer to do such a thing, um, East Hampton Media is going to be hosting a free digital storytelling workshop, uh, this Friday, October 9th, um, where they will, uh, help you, um, you know, figure out how to turn your idea into a finished video production. Um, I believe they'll support you with, um, your technology that you have at home, or, um, they're also doing lending of technology for those of you who want to sort of step your game up a little bit. Um, the last thing I'm gonna just tease a little bit because there's not a, any set details, but they're also working with the Parks and Rec Department to create a, uh, virtual rag shag video. Um, I know that event is always very popular in our city. Um, so they'll be taking videos and images of, um, East Hampton residents in their costumes. I'm assuming mostly kids, and, um, putting together a video highlighting all of them. Um, I'm gonna plan on, um, circling back around on that once there are further details, um, to offer. Um, if anybody wants to, um, look up more information about this, um, easthamptonmedia.org is their website. Um, you can contact them there to sign up for their newsletter to hear about all of these events taking place. Um, so thanks to East Hampton Media for that. It's some fun stuff they've got lined up for the season. Um, if it's all right, I'm gonna take a minute to just talk about my last meeting with the Collaborative Board of Directors as well. Um, so, as I've said before, um, they face a lot of, uh, the same issues that we face on a smaller scale here in our district. Um, and while, uh, things are far from ideal, um, the Collaborative has been very diligent in sort of looking and planning ahead. Um, and as a result, um, they're in a really great position in terms of the way that they've kind of, um, secured grants and contracts and enrollment and PD, um, at an even higher rate, um, than they've maybe seen in the past. Um, the PD especially, I think having it in a virtual setting has sort of allowed them to broaden their reach a little bit, um, since folks don't have to physically come out to their office. Um, along that sort of line of planning ahead, um, they, um, really have committed to this idea of growth and innovation and using the pandemic as a opportunity to, um, innovate. And, uh, they have a, um, they're gonna be embarking on a strategic planning process, um, that I'm gonna be getting, uh, more information about in February. That'll be the sort of the first presentation that they offer. Um, but they're partnering with a, um, consulting firm known as Strategy Matters from Eastern Massachusetts, which shares a lot of the social justice, um, ideas that the Collaborative has worked so hard to promote in, um, the districts that they serve. Um, they've also been, uh, undergoing a overhauling of strategic operations procedures, sort of spurred by the, um, retirement of the executive director. Um, and I just wanted to bring that up because I think that, you know, it's really important, uh, whenever we work in such a, a large sort of organization, which our district sort of is, um, there's a lot of institutional knowledge that I think, you know, we kind of take for granted. So, um, as, um, we move forward, I think it's just, uh, important to kind of think about documenting some of the things that, um, people have, um, and they're really undergoing, um, going into that process in earnest with a lot of their positions. Um, so, I'm just gonna skip ahead to the real meat of it because, um, as I said, they, they face a lot of the same struggles that we do, including staffing, um, for one, um, which I know has been something that a lot of districts have been having a really hard time with. Um, but as we sort of look at the trends, which I think we're gonna do later on in our meeting here tonight, in terms of enrollment, um, across the state, we're seeing, uh, a sort of huge shift in the way that students are enrolled in public schools. Um, I missed the exact figure, um, but they reported to us that statewide, um, public school enrollment is down, um, over 10,000 students. Um, we've also seen homeschooling increase over 2,000 students, and a lot of that has occurred in Western Massachusetts specifically. Um, and I bring that up because, um, you know, we know that funding in schools is, um, always kind of, uh, a struggle. Um, and even though we don't necessarily see that, uh, the effect of that right now in this year, uh, moving forward as, um, funding is dispersed based off of these new numbers, um, there's a concern that we're really gonna see, you know, a domino effect of how this drop in enrollment affects the fundings in our districts. Um, so, uh, they are gonna be working with the Mass Association of School Superintendents, uh, to put out a, um, sort of a shared, what do we call it? Sorry. Uh, uh, essentially a collective statement sort of about the impacts of all of this, um, as we move forward, and, um, it's a great concern. Um, and I'm really, um, I think we're in, you know, fortunate to have the Collaborative kind of bringing people together to think and talk about this, um, but it's not going anywhere. And, um, the last thing I'll say, sort of along the lines of funding here is, um, as, you know, I think people certainly recognize this on a large scale, and, um, there has been, um, talk from the state legislature about removing certain limitations that were applied to the Student Opportunity Act. Um, and I believe that, um, they'll be sending out a survey to, uh, you, Cindy, um, if they haven't already, um, for us to consider, um, related to kind of weighing in on, um, on this particular issue and supporting the efforts to make, um, the funding more available to districts. Um, so, that's it in a nutshell. Um, and that's not even to say anything about the great work that the Collaborative is actually doing on the ground. Um, to just sort of touch on, um, something that was mentioned earlier, one of their primary focuses, uh, moving forward is going to be on serving the youngest grades, especially around, um, those students learning to read because they recognize that, um, that is a great deficit that we are facing in this virtual learning world, um, and the Collaborative wants to be in a position to support that. Um, so that's the long and short of it. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Maren.
Okay, so, um, thanks, Jonathan. Uh, so, there was the Finance Subcommittee meeting, uh, last, end, on Thursday, uh, to review the report that we had received from Colliers. Um, as a reminder, Colliers was hired to come in and do a first step review of our buildings. Um, they were doing a walkthrough of each of our different, uh, school buildings. They were doing, um, visual checks. They were doing, uh, interviews with maintenance, um, getting in review of our systems, so getting, trying to get that first tier of review. Uh, we knew going into it that we would be, um, having to then follow up with a second level. Uh, so this was not ever seen as the final answer. Um, but I did wanna sort of put out that, um, they did come back, uh, with sort of an executive summary and a bunch of action items. Um, first and foremost, we already know and knew, and we're going to be, um, expecting the sort of next stage is to be getting a air quali- not air quality, air, uh, changeover report, um, sort of, uh, hiring the, the experts that can come in and actually do the testing of how quickly our air is turning over in our buildings. So that is a piece that is still, um, pending, the, the next stage. Um, but, that being said, the, the, in terms of the report that was provided to us, um, there was a series of actions that can be that, you know, a good fortune of them were no-cost additions or changes, um, to be able to get our systems, um, sort of improve our quality, uh, both in terms of our space, our ventilation, things like that. Um, and then the additional things that was gonna need some, uh, funding, uh, and some additional review. So it's sort of a first step, looking at our school buildings, um, giving us feedback on that, and then, um, the, sort of acknowledgement that we need to take it to that next stage of getting the air turnover report, um, and testing done. Um, so we've already taken a number of the steps that were the sort of no-cost or very little cost of the actions that our staff could do themselves. Um, this is changing out of a few of the different filters within our high school, things like, uh, changing the airflow patterns of our fans so that fans are pulling air up as opposed to down, uh, to deal with droplet, um, dispersion, things like that. Um, so there's a number of overall actions that they offered. Um, again, the majority of those we've already taken. Um, and, you know, in general, uh, as we sort of expected, our high school is in a very good shape at this point. Um, our, the, the review of White Brook, uh, came also back positive, but there's definitely more things that need to be reviewed there, so that that's still, um, you know, I think that it's, uh, more data is needed before we can really see whether or not White Brook is in a situation as a positive or negative, um, in terms of the building status. Um, the primary reason both of those two buildings are coming back positively is because they have air handlers that are bringing in fresh air. So they have the air exchange that's really, um, seen as a, uh, really important positive, um, not the only way to do it and to be, uh, safer in our COVID situation, um, but at least definitely an important piece of that. And so because of that, in both of those buildings, we're able to do, um, that, uh, and know that they're, um, in the right direction at least, uh, with the high school definitely getting a good review already. Um, the elementary schools, because they do not have air exchangers, um, have a lot more questions. Uh, and so I think that, at least at this stage, there's no real need to kind of give them a score because we really need to see what kind of air exchange is happening, um, and we're able to generate through fans, through windows, through things like that. Um, and so that there's some questions there, uh, both in terms of how, sort of what level of quality, uh, they'll be able to, uh, achieve. Um, and then we can also start to look at costs, um, and understand what might be possible there. Um, some of the other things that we, you know, that they were able to provide was the beginning, uh, of understanding the differences that we can, you know, when we're trying to deal with air in our schools, we can look at either, um, air exchange, right? So we're taking air that's been breathed that may have droplets in it and pulling it out and exchanging it back with new air. Um, or we can be looking at sterilizing that air, um, or, uh, you know, sort of scrubbing that air so that it sort of pulls the, the, any air droplets that may be in the air through that scrubber and cleaning that air and then putting that air back out. So that we, um, are looking at that as an option for some of our buildings that are elementaries that don't have the ability, don't already have an air, uh, filtration system and air intake. Uh, but there's also a, a pretty good range, um, of costs in terms of that. And that's, you know, there's, there's a lot of different types of systems out there that may go to the high end of where a hospital may be dealing with trying to scrub an area of a particular room that can't be connected into the general air quality because they wanna keep it separate. Um, and so we're still looking at that and trying to get some additional information on the cost range that we may be looking at there. So they're still sort of waiting for additional information on that, and we hope to get that back shortly. Um, I also turn it over to, uh, Business Manager, um, Dale Durin, to be able to give any additional thoughts that I didn't include in my report.
Uh, yeah, I'm, Dale. Um, I don't have a lot to add. I think you gave a really good summary, Maren. The o- the only thing that I would mention is, and I think we've said it before, but just to remind folks that, um, some of the low-hanging fruit, if you will, w- we started doing last spring, things like, um, installing screens on all windows that didn't have screens, making operable all windows that were not operable, those kinds of things. So, um, that was noted when, um, the Colliers team came in. Um, the other thing that they noted, which I found interesting, was given, um, the age of the buildings and, um, sort of the advanced notice about them, they found, um, things in relatively good repair so that the, um, equipment that is there is, is being well-maintained and is, is running as well as it can. They expected to find, um, bigger problems with, with what already existed in buildings than they did. So, um, I think that was encouraging as well.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you. So the next steps for here is that we're report, we're waiting on them to bring us a proposal for Stage Two, um, so that then we can, uh, go out and actually have the, um, air exchange, I'm not gonna get the exact name, uh, the air exchange experts in to be able to do that testing. Um, and then they would be able to test, uh, for that air exchange, so we'd have a good sense of where our buildings stand. Um, and we're still sort of continuing to seek, uh, advice, both from the state as well as working with our teachers' union to be able to understand what level of air exchange is needed to be able to keep both our students and teachers safe. Um, but I think that the key is that that is still, that's also looking at when we're closer to full capacity or a larger capacity. Right now, um, as we continue to be well below, um, even 25% or 50% of our threshold of occupancy, um, we're able to be that, that we're able to be in there safely, um, and that's why we're moving forward, at least currently, as for, um, the special populations to be coming in and looking at those, uh, additional usage for additional classes and such. Um, so we're gonna continue to look at how to be able to prepare our buildings for higher volume, but for right now, um, definitely with the use of our high school and the events that the, uh, actions that we've already taken to increase and improve our, um, safety measures there, we're gonna be able to start using our high school, uh, for low occupancy. Dr. Leclerc, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add to, or is that a thorough enough report for where you'd like us to be?
Yeah, I think, I think between you and Dale, you did a great job. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah. I think Shannon has question.
Um, is there any way that we can, um, see a copy of the reports that we have so far?
Uh, I can send it to you right after this meeting.
Okay.
Or by tomorrow morning, how about that? If we, if we go, if we get done early enough tonight, I'll send it to you tonight.
Mayor?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of questions. One, uh, can we put those reports on the website for public viewing? Sure. Also, I have a series of other questions about this.
Mayor, the school website?
Yes, and then we'll put it on the city website as well.
Okay.
So, I, I was wondering, how much did the reports cost?
Uh, that was $4,900.
And were the, also, could you make available the scope of the reports and the work done? Did the scope align with the scope that the city just put out for the review of all public buildings, which public buildings will be open contingent, contingent upon the city's reports, so we can compare apples to apples?
I think so. Dale, did you wanna respond to that? Because I know that you spoke to the folks from, um,
Well, um, there's an appendix for the report that talks about, um, sort of the techniques they used in drawing the conclusions in the report. I think that might get to your question about what was done. Um, we actually, um, knowing that the city was moving ahead, um, in pursuing a contract for, um, looking at the heating systems and ventilation systems in the building, we actually met a couple of times with the Honeywell representative that, um, was sort of, um, serving as an advisor through the process with the city. And, um,
Great.
he indicated to us that the work that, um, Colliers would do, because we didn't wanna duplicate efforts, would inform their work. So, um, I think what they would not do is repeat it, but use the Colliers work to inform how they proceeded, um, with their contract. So now that it's a public bid, could you send those documents to Michael Owens, the city procurement officer, so we can make that available to the package we are putting up on comp buys? For sure. Thank you. Um, and, and then the, um, oops, my screen just went, uh, duh, 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 duh. Um, okay, so then, um, the scope of, of what maybe Step Two is or, or going forward, uh, do you anticipate having to go out, um, for bids under procurement law? Do you want me to answer that, Allison?
Yeah.
The, um, department, um, the state of Massachusetts, rather, put together a list,
Yeah.
state contractor, um, approved list to do this work in schools, knowing that, um, the timelines were very short, and Colliers is one of the vendors that they put on the list so that you don't need to go through a procurement process in order to engage them in the work. Great. And, and do we, um, that, that said, again, I think that there's a larger conversation to have, um, around if the work done and, and that is, uh, defined by DESI is really gonna meet the city and quite honestly, um, OSHA standards. And I have some concerns about what I'm seeing over DESI, but I'm very interested in seeing what Colliers has already done. The work that would be done, say, by Colliers for Step Two or Three, I'm assuming is coming out of the s- the school budget? Correct. Yes. Will there be CARE Act money or the emergency money from the Governor's Fund that we've received a little bit of, of money? I know there was one. Will, will that money be, um, is there money you think that you can pay for this out of those separate pots of money from CARES Act and the Governor's Emergency Education Fund?
We've earmarked most of those grants towards items already, but we're doing a review and a recalculation of those grants.
Right, so the new, yeah, the new advice.
Cased inflated came in under budget.
Yeah.
I think our, our thought process was that if we needed to make improvements in some of the buildings, we would go towards those, um, school department grants.
Okay. CARES Act, Part Two, um, guidances now disalow- disallowed city funds from the CARES Act to go into the school department. So I, I just wanted to make that available, and we might have to do adjustment on some expenditures that have already happened. Um, I was hoping to get more of a fuller report, um, for this meeting, and I am waiting on guidance from, uh, the federal government and our CARE Act liaison. Um, so, wondering about.
Share that with us?
Uh, yeah, soon as I get there. We're, we're, we're waiting for the CARE Act One, um, uh, guidance. So, we found out that Part Two has been, uh, revised, and, uh, we are now waiting for that revision. So, uh, we might, that'll be the thing when we get it. Um, around that, uh, the special populations and bringing back with the idea being, when Maren referred to this in his report, um, bringing folks back with the lower occupancy, um, I'm assuming that that is going to happen with or without further steps in this process, or?
At, at the high school, are you referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. The school department, the school districts are exempt from the occupancy limit, but even if we were following the occupancy limit, we would still be under that threshold.
Right, so.
Back full, full student populations right now.
Uh, yeah, so I, I'm a little concerned about that. Like,
Yeah.
I, I'm trying not to be snippy, but, um, not with this, but with DESI. DESI has their nose into public health issues, and the exemptions that they're granting for buildings that are no different than any other buildings are extremely concerning to me. I desperately want kids back in school. I want in-person learning. However, I am really, really concerned that we are talking out of two sides of our mouth as a society, where people can or cannot go, and then all of a sudden, there's, uh, you know, there's an exception for schools. So the mental health and behavioral issues that will come about for children and for families are so, um, are so very, very real. And I, I'm, I'm sorry that I, I forgot. A- all I can see is Everett, um, and I, I don't remember the mom's name, but, I mean, that's a really real concern. And, and I want kids back in, but I'm not understanding why school buildings in general across the Commonwealth have different standards, especially what we're seeing in New York City, um, and, and other places.
Well, you're on the advisory committee, you can ask that question.
Oh, no, I have. And I, I, and that is probably one of the reasons why they will not put me on the education advisory board. I'm very clear on that board.
To, to peel back the layers a little bit, Mayor, um, the high school occupancy is, I think, about 500 students, and we're talking special populations. When it comes down to the number of children that will actually walk through the door, is probably around 40 to 45 students.
Yeah.
Um, that's based on initial projections that they've given us. We're anticipating about half, um, about 50 to 60% of our kindergarten population will want to return, which would be another maybe 50 or 60 students. Um, and so that would bring us up, you know, around 100 or so.
Yeah.
And, you know, the next step for me, and those will be on two different floors of the building.
Great.
There'll be about five classrooms on each floor that'll be used. Um, and, you know, my next goal would be to bring back first graders, and my hope would be that if, uh, if the, um, data in East Hampton continues to be And my hope would be that if if the data in East Hampton continues to be very good, and it is very good right now, I would like to, you know, ask to bring first graders back, you know, at the end of November, at the high school again. And, you know, we would reassess because that that moratorium or directive from from the mayor is through the end of this calendar year. So at some point, the mayor will reassess the buildings for January 1st. And if we have the opportunity to open any of our other schools after January 1st, we'll we'll move desks and things over the break again. I'll talk about that in my presentation tonight.
Thanks. I know we're a little off this topic. Thank you very much. That was helpful. Very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you. Dale? I I just wanted to say that as as close as East Hampton High School was appraised to be ready for occupancies, there are a few things that we need to do. And and I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. There there is the switching out of the rigor of some of the filters in the building. And we need to do with deal with exhausting one room differently than it's currently exhausted. So so there are a couple of things that need to be done at East Hampton by recommendation of the Colliers team, regardless of the number of people in the building. Anybody else? All right. Any other subcommittee updates? Lori?
I'll be very brief. I just wanted to mention that we did meet yesterday. Sarah Mocheck is chairing it, as I have mentioned in the past, and also during our last school committee meeting. I also mentioned that our school nurse, our district nurse, Brooke Foss, was going to be meeting with the other nurses to come up with protocols. And they presented a document yesterday. Dr. Leclerc, are you going to be posting that document on the district website?
That was a draft, and they were making a few adjustments.
Right. But I just want to mention some of the items on the table of contents, so the public is aware that we are discussing these protocols. So the symptoms, the suspected cases and the positive tests of COVID-19 will be included in that document. The presence of multiple positive COVID-19 cases, if that does occur, the protocols were discussed. We also discuss close contacts, snack and meal times, mask breaks, and bathroom policy. So I just wanted everyone to be rest assured that we are delving into all of these scary topics. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
If I could just add to what Laurie said, that's the COVID response team at the district level. And besides our internal people that are on that committee, our nurses and things, we have our school physician. We have the epidemiologist that we're working with. And we have Bree, our city health agent, is on that committee. And they all weighed in on that guidance that we developed, that our nurses developed. So it's it's gone through a lot of hands, if you will, for review.
Thank you. Yes, I had mentioned the members of the committee in the past, so thank you for repeating that, because there are new people here. I should have done that. Thank you, Dr.
That's okay. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. So let's move on to our superintendent update.
Okay, well, as I get started, I want to just take a minute and have Bill Evans kind of turn on his camera, because Bill wanted to come to the committee tonight and give you a little update on the sports, not not a not a great detail, but there have been some changes in protocols. So I think he wanted to talk to you a little bit about volleyball. And he has a request of you. And I think he has a little bit of background information as to why this request is being made. So I'll let him have a few minutes, and then I'll I'll go into mine after that.
Thank you, Dr. Leclerc. I assume you can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So we found out earlier this week that the the MIAA and subsequently our our local league, the Pioneer Valley Interest Colastic Athletic Conference, PVIAC, have both approved spectators at volleyball games. So our request is to entertain that thought of having spectators be able to attend our volleyball games under the following guidelines. So we had our first volleyball match yesterday. East Hampton won. And the way it worked is that the the visiting team came in through the side door that opens onto the patio. And they were all seated on one side of the gym while the East Hampton players were seated on the opposite side of the gym. Everyone was required to wear masks the entire time. Only essential people were in the gym, players, coaches, officials. Everybody hand sanitized, there's hand sanitizer available at the at the door. Balls were, after they were used in play, were washed and a new ball was was rolled out onto the floor for for use, and they kept rotating the balls into the game. Somewhat cumbersome, but it worked. We also had a student, we were able to have one of the players who was not playing in the game be able to post the game on Facebook Live. So that parents could watch if they were available. So it went pretty well, we think, but the way that we would entertain having spectators. To begin, we would use the same rule we're using essentially in the soccer, which is we would have one spectator per player. So there are 12 players on a team. Only spectators from home game, from the home team would be able to attend. We would have 12 additional bodies in the gym according, in addition to the players and the officials and the coaches. The way that spectators would be seated, they would all sit sit on the one side of the gym, six feet apart. Obviously, there's plenty of space to have 12 spectators six feet apart, as well as players on the first row, which operates sort of as the bench, but again, they're all separated. Everybody, of course, would be required to wear a mask for the entire time. They would hand sanitize when they came in. Since they're all seated on the one side of the gym, they would all be facing in the same direction. Again, in and out through that side door. And we would, we have a bathroom that players and officials are using, which is just the one bathroom that what happens is they they go to the back of the gym where there's an official posted. They request to use the bathroom. It's one person at a time. They are are given a hand wipe and are asked, when they're finished using it, to to sanitize any surfaces they came in contact with. That would be the same procedure for the spectators, but we would ask the spectators beforehand to plan ahead and try to refrain from needing to use the bathroom while they're at the game, just to minimize the amount of traffic in and out of the bathrooms. There are four more home matches on the schedule. The first one is on Thursday evening, October 8th, and then there's one on October 22nd, and November 2nd, and November 5th. I'm not clear as to whether there'll be a postseason and whether or not we'll be participating and hosting a game. We'll obviously cross that bridge when we get to it. But again, for the regular season, there are only four more matches. There is JV and varsity, so we would allow the JV spectators to come in for the JV match. They would all leave, and then varsity matched a different set of spectators to come in afterwards. So that's what we'd like to do. You know, if you, if you're a parent who's child has participated in high school sports, if you're like me, that was one of the the great joys of watching your your kids grow up and compete in sports. And and I know the parents have done really missing being able to see their kids compete, and and they're hoping that this can happen, even if it's if it's just one at a time. So thanks for hearing me out.
Lori? Lori?
As a member of the COVID Rapid Response Team, I would like to repeat something that Megan Harvey, the epidemiologist, said last week or the week before. I'm not sure Dr. Leclerc was present. She said that she thought that testing should occur not only before all sports started, but weekly. That isn't occurring, and I was told because we voted on this, I couldn't then say I want to go now to say that every athlete should be tested weekly. Rapid response testing, not waiting for a two-week answer. I have been on pins and needles because I voted to approve of something. And from the onset, I said I was against having volleyball, which is indoors. We don't even have our students indoors at this point. And now that's not enough, and I know, I am a parent, I said this before, of two athletes. I went to every game I possibly could. I rushed to Berkshire East to see my daughter's ski race. I understand what parents are going through. But I also see the numbers rising drastically and alarmingly in Massachusetts. We have Springfield very close to us in the red. And now, parents want to be there as spectators in a sport that's inside. I am very much against this.
Anyway, okay, Maren?
Principal Evans, if you could just clarify too, what is the occupancy of our gym?
It's a lot. It's a lot. We get the entire building gym stude, I don't know the number off my top of my head, and I'm in my house, so I can't run to the gym and see what the number is outside. I think it's north of 500.
It is. When I had the cheer exhibition there, it was, I think, close to 600.
Okay, so the occupancy of the gym is around, let's say, 500, to be conservative. And if we're adding on 12 more people, we'd be adding, would be a total then of roughly 50 people in that gym at any one time, then, is what I'm understanding.
So we can do a quick count. If we have 12 players on each team, that's 24. We had 12 guests, that's 36. Have two coaches, probably, that's 38, 40, and maybe two or three officials, that's 43-ish. So, yeah, close to 50, but not quite.
Then you double that, then you double that because you're having a JV team come in and then a varsity team come in. So those numbers actually get doubled, even though they're not at the exact same moment.
Right, double would not be accurate, but.
Why would it not be accurate to double?
Because you wouldn't have 12 spectators for for both events, both in the gym at the same time. So I think you're right, because there would be the two, so if you have a JV team and a varsity team for both teams, then yes, that would add an additional 24, but you wouldn't double the number of spectators. You only have 12 for for each match.
Right, but you're still talking about roughly 43 people coming in for JV, then 43 people coming in for varsity.
So at the JV match, if, I'm going to redo this, because I think it's it's not quite the way you're saying it.
Okay.
So at the JV match, if the JV, if the varsity and the JV are both in the gym, which, by the way, they weren't yesterday, now that I recall, the varsity was waiting outside of the gym, and we're not in the gym while the JV game was going on. So, no, the answer is, that's not true that we wouldn't double it, because in the JV game, there'd be the 12 players and the 12 players, the 12 spectators. That brings us to 36. And we assume two, four, six more for coaches and officials, maybe seven more. So 36 plus seven, 43. So we wouldn't add another 43. If you're saying some would come out and some would come in, the answer is yes. So 12 spectators, 12 players, and 12 players would all leave. And then the other, the second two teams and the second and the second set of spectators would come in. In the gym at any one time is still the 43.
Right. But it's so I obviously voted no, that I did not want sports. I was very nervous about this. I absolutely did not want volleyball, which is an indoor sport. I will tell you my concerns. We are learning now that it is not just droplets, that we're talking about aerosolized virus, and we are learning that six feet may not be enough. We are talking during a sports game, when you are playing volleyball, I played volleyball, I loved it. You are exerting a lot of, you are exhaling a lot of air. And so you are increasing respiratory virus potentially into the air. And a mask is going to slow down, but it is not going to completely stop. I just agree with Lori. I think a couple of things. Number one, you're talking about more people coming in. You're talking about the potential for building a more, a bigger viral load. We are not talking about testing those parents ahead of time. So we talked about testing players before they played, but now we're talking about having visitors come in, and those visitors do not have a test. And you you can ask people not to need a bathroom, but that is an impossible task for many people, and people are going to be using the bathroom. So I can tell you, I would be very, very concerned, especially given that we really are finding that six feet isn't always enough when we are talking about aerosolized virus. So I I I am 100% uncomfortable with this. This, to me, I would be happy that I have volleyball. I think that the safest way that we can do volleyball indoors, which already makes me nervous, I agree with Lori, I'm on pins and needles. I would like to keep it as safe as possible, and I am 100% uncomfortable with adding more people. I don't know how anybody else feels, and we need to vote on it anyway, but does anybody else want to talk about it? Shannon?
So I'm not sure if all of you have been in the gym. It is huge.
I know.
I could hear them playing last night. It sounded great, by the way, Bill. The doors were open. I'm sure the fans were on. And there is more than enough space for people to be more than six feet apart on those bleachers. And honestly, I know a lot of the parents that are, you know, from the team. And just reading their posts last night on Facebook was heartbreaking. Some of them are seniors, and, you know, it's just, maybe maybe do half of the team or some, you know. I think Bill's proposal is really, really well planned. And honestly, it 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 was nice to hear noise coming from the high school last night.
Maren?
So I just want to confirm one of the pieces that we had originally laid out in our approval of fall sports, including volleyball, was that they were going to be having basically anytime before a game or a practice that they're reporting, they're doing a self-report. Is that correct, Principal Evans?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
So.
They were all tested as well.
Right, if they were available to. I know that was. I think the other piece that would make this a little bit more comfortable for me, and it may feel uncomfortable for the people that had to do it or for the people that had to answer the questions. But if we were able to include parents that were coming into the building, if they were doing the same self-reporting, and the coach was basically required to get all of that self-reporting from any parent that would add them by coming into the building, be a part of that group. I would, I would at least be in the direction of feeling more comfortable if they were also doing a self-reporting aspect of current symptoms. Is that something that you think would be acceptable for the coach to be able to facilitate in advance of any game?
I think that the the app works pretty, pretty well. And from what I, from what I understand, it's something they can download on their phones and go through, and the coach can get instant results. So I don't think that that would be too onerous to have whoever is coming into the games. I don't think that that would be too onerous to have whoever is coming into the games complete the same thing. Not exactly sure the mechanics of it, but I do think that that's something we can manage.
Bill, are you guys doing any kind of contact tracing? Like as far as, you know, signing in, or are those things that you've thought about?
Yeah, so that's happening, that's happening at the soccer games, where there are people that are allowed to come to the outdoor games. So we would institute, obviously now with volleyball, we know everybody that's coming into the gym, because they're either part of the team or they're an official. So we would have people sign in, like we do coming into the building every day now, anyway.
So once again, I'm just saying I'm really concerned. It's an indoor sport. We're not supposed to be dancing at weddings. The numbers are supposed to be down at a wedding, and you are not supposed to dance indoors, because that is considered too much energy in moving around, and you are increasing your inhalations and exhalations. The idea of increasing any numbers, I'm truly happy with what we have, and I'm not comfortable with what we have, but at least I I urge us not to increase those numbers. I know it's sad not to see kids play, but the numbers are rising in Massachusetts. I don't want us to have a problem here. I really don't.
Lori?
I would like to add something else that our epidemiologist told the committee, is that even wearing a mask, when there are athletes wearing them, they become wet and they become very ineffective.
Correct.
So, and I also hesitate to let anyone self-report who would be excited to see their senior play. It's almost like why we're afraid with parents that need to go to work, and they're going to give their kids Tylenol, as they've done for years. And we've seen, even at a national level, how this is spreading, and that people are not self-reporting, and people are showing up. So unless they would have a test within 24 hours and could present that at the door, maybe then I'd consider it, but I'm sorry, I go, I very rarely even go into a store, and the number of people that wear masks underneath their noses, like they think they're doing something, is just appalling and scary. And who is going to be there policing every parent in the audience? I know parents wouldn't do it intentionally, but they'd be excited in getting up and their masks will drop. And I just, I don't want to be responsible for any rise in these COVID numbers.
Just, Lori, there would be administrators on hand, they're assigned to the games, so that's part of the task, is to make sure that everyone's following the rules, but I understand your point.
And just a, just a point of clarification. For all of the athletes, they have multiple masks that they wear during a game, because they do get moist, and so the coaches are mandating multiple masks. So the students are changing them throughout the game.
Yep.
Well, Shannon?
I think Jonathan's getting ready to talk.
I was thinking about it.
He's still thinking?
I was kind of mulling over, you know, I had some thoughts sort of from both sides of the aisle, if you will. I think if there's any one saving grace here, it's that the spectators are strictly for the East Hampton students. My thinking is that the students are probably already exposed to whatever those people are exposed to, and therefore are bringing in sort of the same kind of risk. That being said, I do know that East Hampton Media is working with the volleyball team to support them in recording, and then distributing video of the event besides just Facebook Live. So from the other side, that's going to sort of up participation a little bit. And then the last sort of thing that I'm thinking about here is, throughout this whole process, we have talked about approaching this with an abundance of caution, and I agree that it is, you know, we have allowed volleyball to happen, and that that is a benefit to the students, and that ultimately the students are our primary charge here. And having played sports myself, I understand parents wanting to be a part of that experience. But I also think that they can support their students in other ways. So all that's to say, I appreciate what all of you are saying, still feeling a little bit on the fence here.
I agree, Jonathan. I feel like, given what we, the plan we presented, is probably relatively low risk to bring spectators in at this level. However, you know, I was very happy to vote to bring athletes in, to give students an opportunity to play sports. I feel much more hesitant to have our next expansion be for spectators. I'm more interested, if we're going to incur the risk that is inherent in bringing people into the building, I really want it to be student-centered, student activities and educational opportunities. I would much rather be hearing a proposal to get arts, civics clubs, the, you know, LGBTQ groups, other ways to get kids interacting with each other safely in our buildings before bringing parents in, much as I understand the urge to have parents, the parents feel to see their kids play sports.
Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I wasn't, I missed the vote on the volleyball. I would have voted no. I think that there are folks with much more resources than we have the National Football League, Major League Baseball, and the NBA, and they're really having trouble keeping people safe on the court, never mind in observing. So I have grave concerns about this, certainly understand the emotions being presented, but also our really hard-working and informed COVID response team for the district has been pretty clear about what they would want to see. And they're very invested and knowledgeable about East Hampton, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand with Lori's group and the epidemiologist.
Okay, so does somebody want to make a proposal, and we'll take a vote? Is there any more discussion?
I mean, would you guys be open to possibly doing a few parents at each game?
A what?
A few parents at each game. There's four left, there's 12 students. You know, it only happens
I myself would not, and I'm sorry for parents. I, you know, I was a parent of an athlete. I understand this. This is a pandemic. We're learning still more about this pandemic. We just learned that it's aerosolized. We're not just talking about droplets. And I just think that I'm going to be crossing my fingers the entire time that we're playing these games inside to take any other chances. I, you know, we're interested in getting kids into the building. To me, that is a much higher priority than adding spectators to a game.
Maren?
I just want to restate, I think it was Jonathan who said, and I just want to restate it again. I think that, or maybe it was Marissa, but you know, we have to recognize too, again, the risk factor of what we're adding to this mix is very low. We're talking about the, a parent of a child that's out there playing, which means anything that the likelihood of exchange is already happened before the game. So yes, that's still, then exchange allows for additional spread, but we're not talking about strangers, we're not talking about large numbers. I think that we're talking about pretty small numbers. I would, one question I actually do have for Principal Evans is to say, do we, how many seniors do we have on the varsity team? Do we know?
I think it's four or five, and there will be, you know, that last game, November 5th, would probably serve as our senior night.
So I guess that, you know, as, I hear that, you know, overall, I hear we're largely towards a high concern, but maybe for those parents who are of seniors, to be able to include them, so then we're looking at four or five additional people into that room. Again, with people who are in a daily connection, close exchange with these athletes that are playing on the court, I do not think that that's going to be increasing the risk in any kind of serious way at all. I think it's extremely low risk that we're talking about still, and in terms of additional COVID exchanges that could happen there, so I think that might be a compromise, that we might be able to move in a direction of, Maren?
Jonathan?
I do just want to clarify something, because I do feel like we're, you know, I presented the idea, and I do think it's sort of an assumption that I was making, that the spectators would be people sort of within the residential bubble of the student, if you will. I don't know that that's necessarily been a part of the conversations on your side, Principal Evans, and I just wonder if, I assume, you know, we all assume that's probably the intention here, but has that been talked about in any sort of explicit fashion?
Thanks for raising that point, Jonathan. The, it would be, it would be specified to members of the same household. It's not, it's not an assumption that I would make, that that would be a parent necessarily. It might be a caregiver of a different type, but it would have to be somebody that's in the same household as the player. I think that's how we would phrase it. So just to clarify that it wouldn't be, I'm going to invite my best friend, and she's going to invite her best friend, and we're just gonna, you know, it's going to be 12 new students from 12 different other households. It's really only members of the household. And if, you know, if I don't have anybody in my household that can come to that game, then nobody comes to that game.
I, if I could also add, and I hear clearly the concern that some of you have raised, but I do want to say that we would not be having this conversation, I don't think, if we were one of those communities that had high rates.
I better go, I can see my Zoom hair deteriorating.
Somebody, okay, we need mic turned off, please.
It's like, I don't know what's happening to my hairline, but I
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I was just going to say that we would not, and this really goes without saying, but it's just a reminder. You know, as we are tracking the virus, the rates are extremely low in East Hampton. We can have discussions about what they look like in the eastern part of the state. But, you know, if we're talking about our community, where we have our school and our athletics, these students are in a community with less than five cases for the last three weeks. I mean, we're in unshaded territory, so I just wanted to just make the point that, you know, there are communities that have much higher rates of infection. And we would probably not even be entertaining this discussion if we were not doing the things we needed to do in East Hampton to keep our rates, our transmission rates, low. So I mean, East Hampton is to be commended for keeping the rates. They have steadily gone down each week, and you know, I don't have to remind everyone that, you know, I'm talking to our health agent, you know, all the time. I'm speaking to the epidemiologist, you know, all those things. So you know, the rate is at a place where if it was going to happen that we would have spectators, now would be the time.
Dr. Leclerc?
If we're going to entertain it.
Your, your statement about East Hampton implies that every volleyball player is only from East Hampton, and that there are no school choice. It also implies that every parent who would be coming, who is part of that family, is not coming from another city. And we know that there are a lot of two-parent households that are separate. And so we have to be really careful when we say that East Hampton is down. I absolutely understand that, and I'm so thrilled. But our students are often school of choice, and parents often are coming from other towns, and some of those towns are going up. So we have to be really, I just always want to caution you, when you say East Hampton is low, we are not in the bubble. If this was a bubble, we would be all set. We have people coming in from other towns, and so we have to always take those numbers into effect. Lori?
Even if they live in East Hampton, they work in other places. They are coming in contact with people who come in contact with other people.
Correct.
That's what we have to remember. I officiated a wedding of a young couple who had planned a very large wedding and couldn't even have the grandparents there. People are making sacrifices to keep people safe. I feel very bad for parents, especially parents of varsity athletes, I've said that. But we have to think about all of the contacts and keeping our community safe, our students safe.
Mayor?
You're muted.
You're on mute, you're on mute, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, just to tag along with Lori's statement. You know, East Hampton's rates are low, and that's fabulous. We're also a city of 16,000, so the data points, as far as who might be positive on where that is coming from or going, I think is more likely to be outside of our city than inside. I do think that we have a regional responsibility to do our part and keep our rate as low as possible. When we know in our region, there are our cities and towns who are really struggling with their rates, and it's not that anybody works to get more or less, there are just some factors in some of our cities and towns, our neighbors, that aren't as controllable. That said, this, you know, what resonates for me over and over again, that this is not about a school or municipal budget, and/or legislation where you compromise. COVID-19 very clearly does not compromise. And I don't think it's about to start.
Shannon?
I would actually like to make a motion to, at least if not let parents go to the games, at least go to senior night on the last night. Is this thing on?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's on.
That idea crossed my mind.
Mayor?
The virus isn't going to take that night off.
Correct.
But it gives us a chance to watch the numbers and see what's happening with the people going back to school. It's November 5th, you have over a month.
I, I, I'm sorry.
Did we just see what happened in the Rose Garden recently, outside? I'm sorry, there's one spreader event. That's all it takes.
And we're talking indoors. You know, whether Bill comes and makes a proposal to us closer to that game, if the numbers are down, that, you know, might be different, I can tell you I do not feel differently. I am really concerned about volleyball indoors, period. I am going to cross my fingers and hope everything goes well, and I just think it is a bad idea to add anybody else to the mix.
I don't know that I would feel like, if that was the motion that was on the table, Shannon, I don't know that I would feel like with two more meetings in between now and then, that tonight would be the night to vote on that particular proposal. That being said, as they say, it only takes the one. Of course, I don't know that I would, we certainly have a lot more precautions in place than they did at the Rose Garden, but that's a different different issue altogether.
Mayor?
I just don't think it matters about the Rose Garden or I just don't think it matters about the Rose Garden or look what happened with the Patriots and the Tennessee Titans. I, I mean, the precautions there, it's millions and millions of dollars.
And they get tested every, every day or every other day. It's, it's crazy. We're not even talking about testing people. There's very little testing around in this area, except with their sewage problems.
So just a point of clarification, Shannon made a motion. I don't believe it was seconded.
It was not seconded.
So now, now are you making, is someone making another motion? Or do we, do we table that? How do you, how do you proceed if you have a motion that was not seconded?
I didn't hear that as a motion per se, I just heard it as a question. I don't know if we, if you want to make an official.
There, and I'm sorry, that could be my mistake.
I heard Shannon's as a motion.
Yeah. But it was not seconded, so if you can't bring it forward.
So does someone want to make another motion then? I think that's the process that you want to take. Or do you want to table it? Or how do you want to proceed?
I don't want to make a motion in favor of it. Somebody may. And if they do and it's seconded, then we'll have a vote.
So I would make a motion then that we table this discussion now and that we revisit this in the future with the possibility of revisiting it in time for the senior game and being able to make a motion at that time. And we have more additional information on numbers.
Mayor?
I, I'm not 100% sure, but if a motion hasn't been seconded, then it can't go forward in any form.
Correct.
Sue, a motion about to table a, a topic that's in a motion that wasn't seconded. Just, you got to share, share personally.
Sue, you want to weigh in on that?
Hi. What, what do you, what are you looking for?
So we had a motion, it was not seconded. Our understanding is that does not go forward. Therefore, do we need a motion? Marin made a motion to table the discussion till we get closer to that.
That would be, the motion that Marin made would be to table the discussion. He didn't say to table the motion from Shannon. So I would say that he's making a motion to table the discussion.
I think Shannon might need to withdraw her motion.
No.
If it's not seconded, it's automatically withdrawn, is my understanding.
Right, right.
So I've made a new motion. I can put a date on it if we, what is the night of the senior game? Principal Evans?
November 5th.
November 5th. So I put a proposal that we, that we hold off on any further discussion of this until the October 27th meeting. At that time, we can revisit this of whether or not we'll have additional information on data on our points. And we can then look at it as a possibility for the senior game.
I second that.
Okay, Jonathan?
With the stipulation that an I-vote here does not in any way insinuate that I'm going to vote in favor of it on the 27th.
Correct.
And I don't want to get people's hopes up. I will vote I to have a future conversation about it.
That's my concern too, because we're, we're implying that we're looking at it with a possibility of saying yes. And I would not want parents to think that our vote is necessarily going to be in favor of anything. Marin is just asking that we relook at the issue on the 27th.
Can we continue the roll call vote? Please?
I made my vote.
Yep, Lori?
Lori Garcia, no.
Mayor? You're, you're on mute. My apologies. Mayor LaChapelle, no. Okay. Shannon?
Shannon Denham, yes.
Marin?
Marin Goldstein, yes.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, yes.
And Cindy Kuzensky, no. So that is one, two, three, four. We will be looking at it on October 27th. Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to start with my few things.
Yep.
The first thing you should have in your packet is the October 1st enrollment numbers. They are, just to give you perspective, they are 72, 72 students less than last year at this time. So it's a decrease. We have had an uptick in our homeschool numbers, which Jonathan alluded to is an issue across the state right now. And many of the families have even indicated we're doing this temporarily until, you know, until school is back to normal again, and then we'll re-enroll. So, you know, that's just a choice that some families are making. So that's where the majority of our decrease comes from. Any questions about that? Okay, that was just a data point that I wanted to share with everyone. And I, I wanted to talk a little bit this evening. And I'm going to try and go through this presentation I have quickly because I know it's getting late.
Dr. Claire?
Yes.
Can I ask one quick question? I'm sorry. On the additional homeschooling grades, can you give a, not by grade, but roughly where most of those new lie, if they're more within the elementary?
Elementary.
High school?
Elementary.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. All right, so work continues on. This is what we're doing at the school district level. I don't think I need to remind anybody. We're, we're continuously looking at the challenges of delivering instruction remotely. We'll be surveying families next week, as I mentioned. We're looking at the, our health and safety protocols. We are still in the midst of negotiations with our unions. We're looking at our facility use and our cleaning procedures. We'll be bringing staff that will be coming in for special populations in early to train on all the PPE. We're looking at the transportation, which is different because we'll be transporting little ones from their homes to the high schools. So it's different mileage and different routes. And so everything, we're like creating everything new. And all the while, while we continue to work on delivering instruction through our educational platform. So all that continues on. Remote Plus will be starting, and I wanted to give you updates on timelines. This is a little different from our summer plan, I think in the summer. The initial paperwork in the summer said October 13th. But we're pushing that back, October 13th is next Tuesday. We're pushing it back to the following Monday because of all those things on the previous slide. The, in the summer, when we were planning to bring back special populations, our hope was that we would be bringing them back to their home schools. But as you can imagine, bringing back special populations into a different school requires additional steps such as moving furniture. That includes moving furniture out of current high school classrooms and moving little people furniture into high school classrooms. It includes rerouting all the buses because they'll be, the little ones and the special populations will be going from their homes to the high school. So there's just a whole medley, we need to get our staff, some of whom have never set foot in the high school, acclimated to the new building. We want to do video clips for the little ones so that they know what it's like to walk in the building. So there are a lot of kind of extra pieces that go along with starting this in a new school. And we want to do it correctly. So we will be putting that off from the 13th to the 19th. And in the last update I gave to families, I said sometime in mid-October, we would be bringing back special populations. So some families are hearing this date for the first time, and I will share this with them tomorrow. And then Remote Plus, the second phase of Remote Plus, the kindergarteners and the ELLs will come back the following Monday. We want to give time again to kind of get all our ducks in a row. Again, that's moving more classrooms of furniture, getting more staff trained in PPE, getting people acclimated to the new school building. So we're, we're just trying to put this chronologically at a, at a manageable pace for us to do all the things that we need to do, starting in a new school building. So, and please stop me if you have any questions. I can only see a few of the school committee members on my screen right now. So if someone's hand is up and I'm not addressing you, please just kind of yell at me and I'll stop. So let me talk about preschool and RISE. They'll be in the October 19th. RISE is our preschool special populations program. And preschool is our regular preschool program. Some students will be reassigned in preschool. We have two preschool teachers. One will teach remotely, one will teach in person. They will work in like a co-teaching model. So both of them will be collaborating all the time. So we may need to rejigger a few of our students and reassign them. This will be true across every grade level that we bring back into the buildings. When you start in remote, in fully remote, and then you bring teachers back at a later time, it is going to cause you to reassign some students. We would only avoid that if we had started in a hybrid model at the beginning of the school year. So the time for preschool will be the normal preschool time, which is a half day. Preschool's a half-day program. RISE is also only going to be a half-day program for the purpose of transportation. These are our special populations group. So they will be coming into the building four half-days a week, Monday through Thursday, with Friday being a cleaning day, a deep cleaning day and a remote learning day for all the children. Friday for teachers normally in preschool and RISE is always a day with no students. It's an evaluation day for preschool and RISE teachers. And that's been the normal practice. So when we're fully in-person, preschool's only four days a week. I don't know if everyone knows that. The RISE program itself only has one teacher and one paraprofessional who will be assisting the, the remote students. So we have one teacher, but because the enrollment is so small, like maybe just four or five students, I think two of them will be coming into the building and two of them will be at home. So, and then all children will leave school with a bag lunch to take home. Any, any student that wants it, we won't make them. But they can have a free lunch to take home and have their lunch at home and then proceed with their, with their afternoon. For our other special population programs at the elementary level, they're called SOAR and LEAP. One is a program for autism and one is a behavior program. Students will work with their regular special ed teacher and their paraprofessional support. Will be there for the remote learners as well, so they'll do both. The hours are half-day. It's normally a full-day program, but we're bringing these students in four mornings per week. And this will be modeled a little bit differently. Wednesday will be the remote learning day. And the reason for that is because the elementary schools, we want them to operate as they would in that cohort A, cohort B model as we go forward, which is getting a little confusing. But all you really need to know is the only program that will be Monday through Thursday will be anything that's associated with preschoolers. Everything else from, from that point on, from kindergarten on, will be a Monday, Tuesday and a Thursday, Friday model. These students will also, whoops, sorry. These students will also leave at half-day, but they will do remote learning at home in the, every afternoon. They're full-day students. And then we have, at the middle school, we have three programs, DLC, BEST and AIM. They're all middle school programs. They'll be taught by their special education teacher and the paraprofessionals. Their hours, which mimic their school hours, will be half-days again. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Wednesday will be fully remote. And a bag lunch will go home with the students for remote lessons in the afternoon. For our EL students, we would look, so our EL students are our English language learners. English is not their first language. They're part of our first group to come back. We would bring back, Level 1 and Level 2 students are the students that have the least amount of English. They're probably the newest to the country. We have some students that are newly arrived here from another country. Those are the students we would identify to bring back. They would work with the ELL, ELL teachers and the paraprofessionals. They would be onsite. They would do the half-day schedule, follow the regular start times, either their elementary or their middle. And they would have a bag lunch to also bring home and do remote lessons in the afternoon. We would make it a goal or a priority to try to get these students in particular back in longer days if we could. They're students that won't tire as easily as some of our special populations students will. And they can probably handle the rigor of being in school full day. So kindergarten, students, again, a reminder, may be reassigned based on survey results. We currently have six kindergarten classes. We have four at Center Peppin and two at Maple. We have a survey out to families now to determine how many are interested in returning. I can tell you at the end of day one, it's running about 75% of families want their kindergarteners to return to in-person learning. So we may have four to five kindergarten teachers that are in-person. And then the other one or two may be doing remote only for those families that really want to keep their child home for an array of reasons. So these children would come two days per week and they'd eat, they'd be split in half. So in a classroom of 18 students, let's say, nine and nine, if all nine in each cohort decide to come. So we might have up to nine students coming on Monday and Tuesday and up to nine students coming on Thursday and Friday, with Wednesday being a remote day for everyone. They're in the school full day. A bag lunch will again be provided. And the priority or the preference will be for students to eat outside under the tents. And we'll do that for as long as we can until we're forced to have students eat inside the building in their classrooms. Remote Learning Center, this is a goal that we are striving towards. And I would hope to get to this point at, by the end of October. And it would be an opportunity for students to come in during the day and receive support and monitoring while they are accessing remote instruction. It would be staffed by our faculty and staff. Space would be limited to adhere to physical distancing. We are looking at the high school library media center, which I know many of you have been in before. But even in that large space, we may limit the number to 15 to 20 students max. We have a, if you, if you've ever been in that space, there is a classroom breakout room that we could probably safely distance. that we could probably safely distance three or four students in there. And then there is the large main area where we could fit lots of students, but we would want to just safely distance everyone. So that's a goal to get to that point because we are hearing from so many families that are struggling with either, you know, families that are working and they're having difficulty getting their students on remote learning, or families that, you know, have a variety of reasons that they really need to get their child some support in the school setting. So we want to listen to them. Excuse me.
Dr. Leclair, before you continue from here, this is Maren. So a couple of things, I guess, first off, this committee never voted to approve remote learning centers. It's been discussed a few times, but it was never approved.
Yes.
And at least from my perspective, there's a whole lot more information that I'd want to understand about how that variety of different grade levels, how students are being chosen or approved. There's a lot more information that I would like to understand before sort of any more time or efforts move forward with that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Maren. This is, this is kind of the pie in the sky idea. This is not, there has not been a lot of parameters put around this. You know, it's just something that I am putting out there. This would not start on October 19th. This would be a goal to, you know, look at as we move forward.
Can I just interject something? Maren had mentioned that before, and we actually held another school committee meeting where we were told we would be voting on tents and remote learning centers. And then we had a discussion. And then it was concluded at that meeting that we didn't need to take a vote on such a thing. So we have talked about it extensively and we opened it up. It was on the agenda for a vote and it never came to a vote.
If I may, I would just clarify. I feel like the conversations that have happened about this were pretty strictly tied to using the tents outdoors. And I do feel like maybe the library was mentioned at one point or another as a possibility. I don't recall that as having been a part of any in-depth conversation. But that's just me.
Yeah, I don't think I earmarked the library media center. Yes, we did talk about tents. And tents will be used during this Remote Plus phase. They'll be used for mass breaks. They'll be used for eating. So they will be used throughout the day all the time. But we're also, you know, I can't believe we're in the beginning of October already. And, you know, before we know it, by the time kindergarteners come back, it'll be the end of October and it will be, November will be around the corner. So I want to be mindful, fingers crossed, the temperature stays very mild. But I want to be mindful that that may not be the solution long term.
And when I first mentioned remote learning centers, I didn't even know we were going to be discussing tents at that point. I did mention the high school. So we never said the library per se, but I have mentioned the high school many times for them.
Correct. And we did talk, we did talk about the urgency for supporting those families that, where the kids were really struggling with remote.
And just to clarify that I'm hearing you correctly, that the tents are essentially not, even as the weather is mild, the tents are not really going to be available for that purpose anyways, is what you're saying, because of the other uses.
Yeah, I think once we bring Remote Plus populations back, there'll be frequent mass breaks. We're calling for mass breaks every hour, which I'll, you know, I can talk about a little while. And so I think little people will be in and out of those tents all day long.
Right.
Should I continue?
Yeah, I don't know if we have to settle this issue. My sense is that we encouraged Dr. Leclair, and you can all correct me if I'm wrong, that we were really pushing for a remote learning center plan so that we can address the needs of those kids that were really struggling and their families were really struggling. It sounds like you're just beginning to do that. And I applaud that.
We are. We're starting to think about possible staffing.
Right.
We're starting to think about a number, numbers of students or a layout that would be appropriate.
Right.
And how we can support not only the families in our community, but also staff, you know? In order for some of these teachers to come back to work, they have East Hampton children in their homes. So it becomes important for us to think about the needs of our employees as well.
Yep.
So I'm trying to be mindful of that.
I agree.
So it is, I'm trying to, you know, consider a lot of, a lot of pieces of information. I felt at some point along the way, and I can't recall when, but I did feel that kind of I had a directive from you to explore remote learning centers.
That is my understanding.
Maybe not a vote, but I feel like I have.
Correct. That is my understanding, is that we were urging you to begin to work on this because there's such a need.
So should I continue to work on this? Or do you want me to put this aside for now?
Unless someone is opposed, and Maren, I don't know if you're opposed to having us go forward with this, but I, my sense is if we don't ask Dr. Leclair to plan for this, it's not going to happen. And we have asked her to do it. She is beginning to think of where, when, how, and who. And I applaud that. And I think families will applaud that. And I would say go forth unless someone has a sense that we should not.
Can I interject? I don't know if you guys can see me a lot.
Yep.
So it was my understanding a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about it even prior to that, was that Champions was trying to get into our schools and help us in different ways. And we were looking, we were waiting to find out, A, who needed the services and where we were going to put them.
Yep.
I thought that was where we were moving forward weeks ago.
Well, I know that every meeting Lori has asked for remote learning centers, and I have backed that idea up every single meeting.
Same thing to me, that's what I'm saying.
No, what I'm saying is I think that we're looking at two things simultaneously. We have a lot of addressing of different issues and pieces, and the Champions addresses part of that and the Learning Center addresses another. And we've asked Dr. Leclair to look at all of that. I wouldn't want to hold up remote learning center planning while we're waiting for Champions or vice versa. Go forward.
I thought we were looking at Champions actually taking over and doing a remote learning center.
Well, that could be.
All along.
So Shannon, I can, I actually have a slide coming up, but I can talk about it now on Champions. So I have been working with Champions. Champions needs to get new licensure to go into the high school, which they are working on right now. Because their license comes from the Department of Early Childhood at the state level. So they're working on that. And we have discussed Champions coming into the high school to fill a need. But even if Champions comes in, based on their licensure, they will, you know, normally, let's say, they would be able, their licensure might allow them to take up to 25 kids at White Brook Middle School. You know, because their licensure does have a threshold during normal times. During COVID times, with additional restrictions, their licensure might just allow them to have 10 students. You know, so it's going to fill a need. I'm just not sure it can be the only thing that we do. And so I feel like that's one level, Shannon. But then I also want to recognize another level that I'm exploring for the remote learning center, which is more, I would say, academic-focused because there are some children, we heard a mom tonight, and I don't know if she's still on the call, but she described how her first grader is not yet reading and needs to have everything read to them. For parents that are working at home, that might present a great challenge day in and day out. The remote learning center might be a place for students to come that need just a little bit more academic support than maybe even they would get in the Champions program, which will help with remote learning, but it is more childcare-focused. So that's kind of a little bit of a, if you will, the kind of the steps that I'm looking at. So ideally, I would like to have both. And it may only be like 10 students in bulk. So to address the mayor's concern, I still think we would be within our number for capacity. I think we would still be okay. But we'd have to monitor the numbers. And it may be a lottery system.
Right.
And in addition to everything that you've said, and I thank you and I applaud you for moving forward with this stuff, Dr. Leclair, and I also support Champions. But as a teacher who is online for more than five hours a day with more than 90 students, even though they're high school students, I can tell you that students get overwhelmed with different things that they're doing technologically. Some students have different academic needs and emotional needs that if they could stop into a learning center and they're having trouble with different platforms and accessing things, not the subject matter, but just accessing remote learning, it would be extremely helpful and beneficial, not only to the students, but to the families and to the teachers because we have a whole extra level of service that we are performing remotely that you can't even begin to imagine that the hours that we're trying just to service the students that they feel comfortable.
Right.
Madam Chair, you asked me a question directly. I hope I could be able to answer that before we proceed as well.
Sure, yeah.
So I do have questions and concerns. I feel like there's a lot of comments tonight about feelings about directions. And that's partly why I think it's so important that we actually have votes on things so that we actually can make a decision and have clarity about going forward. This is something that we have not had a vote yet on. We have had several discussions in vaguer terms. And I still feel like this is still a vague term about what a remote learning center is. So I feel like that there's still a lot of lack of clarity. And I think that that's what we said, go ahead and clarify. But I think we do need to reach a point where we're going to take a vote on whether or not we're officially approving a remote learning center and being very clear about what that means. Because it's gone from, at the very beginning, the idea of college students doing centers that may be around the city and have nothing to do with school buildings. And now in this situation, we're seeing it's about staff and teachers of our district in our high school, right? So those are two very different things. And that's why I think we do have to reach a point where we understand what we're approving and actually take a vote on to approve it. I'm not even saying I'm against this. I'm just saying I want to have enough information to be able to make a decision and make a vote as a school committee about whether or not or not we're going to approve something.
Right.
One of the big questions that I have, and I'm very confused on two different pieces. And this is what ultimately, Dr. Leclair, I'd like to have explanations more about. One is sort of the drop-in where a student can just sort of pop in for a little bit and then leave. That's very confusing if that's what we're saying, that they can just sort of stop by and get some extra remote instruction and then leave, or if they're actually there for the entire day. And then also to get a better sense of the remote learning center, what grades are going to be mixed together. It's not appropriate for a first grader to be in a same learning center as a high school student potentially, depending on how they're managed, right? So just those are things that I would want to have a lot more information on. And I'd want to make an official vote on before we just sort of proceed saying, go for it. So that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. And I think you're right down in terms of what you're asking. My only clarification, really, my sense is I'm really asking Dr. Leclair to firm up those plans, come up with a picture, and then let us know what's going on. Absolutely. I mean, we have talked about growing ideas to change. The charge has been the same, which is to please look into trying to do a remote learning center. And once she has a full sense of how many kids, what teachers, where they're going to be, then I think, yes, you're right, we would vote then. But there, you know, I'm just clearing the confusion up. I believe that we're asking her first to come up with a firm plan so that we can then look at, you know, is this a great plan? Lori?
And all those logistics can be worked out once we know that it can be staffed. And originally, Maren, I only mentioned college students because one of the other teachers on school committees in that group of 22 had mentioned that's what they were exploring in Somerville or in Alston. And I said they were in the Boston area. But it was Everett that said they were using different buildings around town. And then that's when we brought the tents in. I was just brainstorming ideas. I was taking information that I was receiving from different districts across the state to see what we could explore. I agree with you. You can't put young children in with high school students, but you can have different hours. You can have different sections. You can have, you can have, I always said that there would be East Hampton staff monitoring this. And when I mentioned college students going through the rigors of an application process, it would only have been under the supervision. So it was never this haphazard plan that was going to be a dangerous situation. As I said, it was brainstorming to try to be able to help as many of our families and students as we possibly can.
I think we're in agreement that we're asking her to go forward and we're going to, we're going to look at the plan when it's finished. Jonathan, did you have something to say before we go forward?
I was just going to ask Dr. Leclair, is it fair to assume that as you continued working out this plan, you were going to follow up this month at our other meetings about those plans?
Yes, I can present more information to you most likely at the October 27th meeting because this remote learning center, to my way of thinking, one of the most important pieces is staffing. And I am really not prepared to say I have the staff for this yet because, you know, we, with staff coming back into the buildings, I have people that are now going on leave and there's just a whole domino effect happening. So I really need to let things kind of shake out and see who's really returning to really know what I can do with the staff that I have available. Not, because I have a very limited number of people available. So I can have further information to share by October 27th. Okay.
Right.
Coming soon. Oh, here is the next slide. So Champions, they're still exploring licensing. I am not sure how long of a process it is to go through the Department of Early Childhood and Care for licensure. I have been told by Champions that some of the, you know, guidance has been, I don't want to say waived, but it's been like eased to make getting licensed a little bit more easy for groups to accomplish. But still, I have no concept of how long it takes. So more information to come. If I have more information on Champions at our next meeting, I can update you then. What will be the same? It'll be the same. So going back to Remote Plus and if students are fully remote, I want to assure families that the daily schedule is basically the same. What will change is we'll have a little bit more flexibility for some of the things we need to do in person. Currently, for example, at the elementary level, there's one hour off at lunch. the elementary level, there's one hour off at lunchtime for students to kind of have playtime at home, have their lunch, that sort of thing. That will get condensed when the students return to school. They don't need a full hour, but what will take up some of that time is to get little ones into their jackets, get their hands washed, walk them down to the tent, have a five-minute mask break, come back into the building, wash their hands, you know, take their coats off, wash their hands again. To do that repeatedly all during the day will take extra time. That's kind of not necessarily in the remote schedule right now, so it will pretty much mirror the current schedule that we've shown you all along, but it'll be a little bit more flexible. We'll eat up some of that lunchtime kind of in the morning as we do mask breaks. All students will be taught the same curriculum, whether they're remote 100% or whether they're coming into school for part of the time. It's all the same curriculum, and they'll move basically at the same pace. So, students are not going to be suffering by taking advantage of being home in a remote, fully remote model, if that's what families are worried about. What to expect in person? Everyone will be wearing masks, adults and students. There will be frequent mask breaks. We've identified like every hour as a frequent mask break. Frequent hand washing. There'll be hand sanitizer in classrooms, and there'll be, of course, access to the bathrooms, where students will have little stepstools, and they can reach the sink. The blowers won't be on, but they'll have access to the water and the paper towels to clean their hands. Physical distancing. We'll have two nurses on-site at the high school. One will be the general nurse, and one will be assigned to the COVID isolation room. We'll have multiple administrators on-site. We have the high school administrators, there are two of them already on-site, but all the other administrators in the district will rotate through the building and have an office at the high school for our, for our student population that's there. Deep cleaning will be on Wednesdays between cohorts. So, those are some of the things that families can expect. And also, what will be new will be additional screening. So, we'll have an app, I think Mr. Evans mentioned it, that all staff and families will need to complete every day before they come into work or school. They'll have to answer a series of questions that we're working on with our health department, with our nurses, and then the nurses will run a daily report. If little Johnny Smith has not, if his family has not completed the health assessment, they will meet little Johnny Smith at the door and bring Johnny down to the nurse's office and call Mom and Dad and have them do the screener before little Johnny even goes to the classroom. They'll run that data report every day. And of course, they've been trained in the contact tracing, and so they have all the protocols in place for that. So, if you have a child in the special populations group, here's what, some of the things you can expect next week. We'll be sending out the rules and protocols for mask use, video clips of the high school. We're trying to reduce anxiety, kind of like a little wayfinding, like, welcome to the high school. Let me take you into the building. This is what you will do. This is what you will see, and, you know, that sort of thing. Parents will be getting information on transportation, and they'll also probably be getting some messages from our nursing staff, reminding them about the flu vaccination that all children need to have by the end of this calendar year, among other things. Masks, just a reminder, masks, families should provide masks for students. Surgical masks are acceptable, or cloth masks, a double-layer, are appropriate. The school district also has youth masks and adult masks for the teachers that we will provide to any family who sends a child in without a mask. So, every child will have to wear a mask, unless there is a medical reason, and then they'll have to get a medical note. Face shields are not a substitute for masks. We all know that. I think it just bears repeating, because I know families worry that, you know, are we considering this? Bathroom use. Prior to exiting the classroom to use the restroom, students will put hand sanitizer on their hands and sanitize. The number of students entering the restroom will be limited. There will be an adult outside the door. When re-entering the classroom, students will immediately sanitize their hands again, even after they've washed their hands in the bathroom, because we know little ones walk down the hall, touch the walls, touch the doorknob, that sort of thing. So, they'll sanitize as soon as they get back in the classroom. Bag breakfast, lunch. Due to the federal waiver, any student that wants a lunch will be eligible to get free breakfast, lunch every day that they're at school. On the days they're not at school, their parents can pick it up. For our pre-K and ELLs meals, whoops, sorry, meals may also be provided that will be eaten during the school day. These meals will not be on trays. They won't be, you know, things in bowls. Everything will be a bag lunch that will be thrown away, single-serving containers. Everything will just be thrown away at the end. Meals will be prioritized to eat outside whenever possible. Of course, children don't need to take our bag lunches. It's just free right now due to the federal waiver for any child that wants it. Parents don't need to fill out special forms. They're welcome to take them. Student arrival and dismissal. It's important to note the procedure for students arriving and dismissing from school, parent, family, vehicles, school bus, specialized transportation, is still being worked on due to the unknowns surrounding the buses, but will be staggered to allow for distancing. On our campus, just a reminder that, because we haven't really employed this really yet, but this should be known in East Hampton, until further notice, the public schools will not allow visitors or volunteers on the grounds. So, parents do not expect to come into the school building at all. Whenever possible, meetings and conferences are held remotely. When a child is being picked up, a parent or guardian will be screened outside of the building via camera and intercom, and the child will be brought to them. For any visitor or vendor who has a need to enter the building beyond the vestibule, they'll be asked to provide all contact information for contact tracing, if we have some kind of repair that needs to be done. We also have a drop box outside of every school building. So, if parents need to drop off medical forms, anything like that, it goes into the box. They can press the buzzer to let the admin assistant know, and then they leave. They don't come in the building. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Okay. All right, let's go on. So...
Oh, I'm sorry. I was muted.
Yes, sorry, I did that.
It's not, it's not a question as much as just acknowledgement. I mean, I, I think that the work, I mean, as I listen to you Superintendent Leclerc, the work, the variables are just so immense, and, and pulling that together and knowing just the comments that already, that we've made tonight, that, that, you know, those slides are shifting, and you're responsive to us and as well as many others. So, I, I do really appreciate it, but, but even more than appreciate it, it's, it's mind-boggling, and I actually just texted my mom, because I'm late in calling her, and I said, "We're on school committee, and, you know, we're in the middle of this, like, there's a plate of spaghetti going on to get, to keep our kids involved and safe, and, and God bless the superintendent." But thank you all, and everybody on the call, but, but seriously, that, I, pretty pictures, but the, the work behind it is, is really intense and immense. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and just to answer, you know, that parent that spoke at the beginning, you know, it is my hope that if, you know, we can, the next group of students we would bring in would be first graders. You know, I fully recognize, I mean, I know I've got parents at every level that want kids back in school, but I fully realize that it's really challenging for the youngest children and for their families. So, you know, first grade would be the next priority as soon as we can safely make it happen.
Shannon?
I just wanted to clarify something. So, when you were going through, Allison, the different days and, you know, which populations were going to be there on each day, we used to have Wednesday being like the deep clean day.
It will be for all students except preschoolers.
Okay, so we're not, there's not actually going to be one day where there's like a deep clean?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be Wednesday for all, everyone except preschoolers, and preschool is in one classroom.
Oh, it is in one, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to clarify. I was confused. Thank you.
And just for a perspective for everyone, because I think it's important, we, we met, I'm actually going to post pictures either tonight or tomorrow, because we actually had an in-person administrators meeting today at the high school. We all socially distanced, but we walked around, and all the, the elementary administrators kind of figured out the rooms. All the kindergarten classrooms, all the kindergarten classrooms will be on one floor, all like classrooms right next to each other, so that the teachers and the students, you know, kind of are all to, I don't want to say all together, because I don't want people to think from a safety perspective, but all special populations will be on the first floor of the building, and all kindergarten will be on the second floor of the building.
Great. Okay, great. So, now, Marissa, we have minutes payroll to go through.
All right, I make a motion to accept the regular session minutes from August 7, 2020.
I'll second that.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor Lachepal, aye.
Marin?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
I make a motion to accept the regular session minutes from August 11, 2020.
I'll second that.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor Lachepal, aye.
Marin?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
I make a motion to accept the regular session minutes from August 18, 2020, with the stipulation to withhold the executive session minutes until those matters are resolved.
I'll second that.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Marin?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
Motion to accept the regular session minutes from August 18, 2020. Did I just do that one? Yes, I did. To accept the, motion to accept the regular session minutes from August 25, 2020, with the stipulation to withhold executive session minutes.
I'll second that.
Lori?
Oh, sorry.
That's good. Mayor?
Aye.
Marin?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
Motion to accept the regular session minutes from September 1, 2020.
Second.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Marin?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Marissa? Jonathan?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
Motion to approve the school payroll dated 9/24/2020 in the amount of $512,844.93.
Second that.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Marin?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 9/24/2020 in the amount of $108,567.92.
I'll second that.
Lori?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Marin?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Marissa?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Cindy, aye. And is there anything under other that anyone needs? Okay, Marin?
So, I would like to suggest that our school committee, in the next meeting, take up the fact that Desi is now suggesting that we will move forward with MCAS testing in the spring. I would like to suggest that we together, put a letter together, at least from our school district, if not in combination with local districts around us, to advocate for Desi to not approve MCAS testing in the spring. It seems a little ludicrous, given all of the current chaos that we're going through and the best that we're doing, to give our students the best education they can get this year, but to have on top of that MCAS that sort of are expecting a standardized experience for students across all stool districts to actually have that data mean anything, is completely inaccurate with the reality of what we're living in in the 20th, in 1920, 1920.
I agree.
2020 and 2021. So, if not tonight, obviously, I would like that we would put it on our agenda, or possibly a small group of us could draft something to bring to our next meeting. Some such action, I think, is called for from this committee.
I absolutely think so. They did waive science, but they're planning on doing English and math right now, which is just ridiculous. Mayor?
I, one, would heartily second and look forward to the conversation around that letter that Marin just suggested, and in support also, it's ludicrous to consider MCAS. And then I had another other, so Rag-Chag Parade and Fall Festival is canceled. Trick-or-treating is not a city-sponsored event, so I, no one can cancel it from the city side, including the mayor. I would just urge that folks who are deciding to trick or treat or dispense candy, do it with the utmost of caution, with masks and washing your hands and distance. It's a, I will just say it's a very tricky endeavor during these times, but it's something that the city cannot wholesale prohibit. But Rag-Chag and Fall Festival is definitely canceled for this year.
I've heard of some people who are considering putting together PVC piping that would be six feet, so you could drop a candy and it'd drop six feet out into the, directly into somebody's bag. So, there's some creative ideas out there about how to do it.
Love for innova, wow. I, I, I'm not saying it would make me want to go trick-or-treating, but I, I want to see that happen. I, I would, you know, stand safely away from that and see it go down. That's, that's pretty cool.
But so, how do we want to go about doing some sort of letter or advocating for cancellation of all MCAS? Is that a subgroup? Is that just discussing it next committee meeting? How do we want to do that?
Well, usually what we do, we don't need a vote to, to write the letter. Often, Marissa is our main writer with somebody else working with her, so...
Marin, do you want to, do you want to get a shared Google Doc going? We can work on it together.
Sounds good.
I love it. Voluntold. Okay, no, that's a great...
Lori, you just muted yourself.
Sorry.
It's been a long day on this screen. What I wanted to say, it was brought up in my teaching district, and what that superintendent said, that at this point, it really isn't even coming from Desi. It's a federal mandate for testing. So, it's a letter you're going to have to think a lot deeper about, or we're going to have to think a lot deeper about, because, as I said, it's federally mandated.
Well, it's, it's a state requirement, so I think, but yes, I agree. We can think about how to point towards the federal as well as state dictation on something.
I agree. All right. Okay, any other other?
I, I do have another other other, but I, I don't want this to become a huge conversation. I just want to ask a question. How do we put on the agenda or plan like a public hearing so that we can interact with the community? I know they do it like at City Council.
I know they do it like at city council.
I'm trying to think.
I don't know who that, is that?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have the answer for that. I don't know if it was, that me, Shannon? I didn't want to.
Whoever has an answer for me.
I can, I can research it. The mayor might know.
I, I was just going to say, I can certainly, I, I don't think it's that different between school committee and city council. And we can look at, at how that's put together and if it's called a forum or the, but, but I do know it needs to stem from an item on the agenda and it needs to be set in advance. The big question would be, and I, I don't even remember how the, if it was interactive, would it need publishing? But I, I'm, between my office and the superintendent's office, we can certainly figure it out.
Okay. Because I would like to have a public forum regarding the SRO. You know, I, I told you guys, I'm not letting this go. So, and I'm, I found that there is nothing that says that we have to have an SRO in our school. We have to have one in our city. It does not say anywhere, including our MOA, that they have to be in the school. So topic for discussion.
Okay. We will look into public forums.
Thank you.
All right. So then I would ask for a roll call vote to go into executive session. We are going to be conducting bargaining with the Teachers Association Unit A. And we will not be returning to regular session. We will be adjourning in executive session. So can we have a roll call vote? Jonathan?
Jonathan, Shannon, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Shannon, you moved on my screen. So Shannon now.
Shannon, I'm aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor Lashwell, aye.
Marin, I.
And Cindy, Kuzensky, aye. Okay. Have a good night, everybody, and we will be going into executive session. Thank you.